There we go. All right. Jake, was that you? Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We'll start with roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Sardau.
Here.
Bertie.
Here.
Gross, here.
Hoffman.
Present.
Ivan.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Manager Leno.
Here.
City Attorney Denver.
Here.
All right, you have before you the minutes of the regular meeting of November 26, 2018, and the work session of November 26, 2018. What is your pleasure?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the commission? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission about our minutes? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Our bills. Would anyone like to pay the bills?
Would we pay the bills?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Would anyone from the public like to address us about our bills? Roll call.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. City Managers report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. Our mission at the City of Yankton is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. Our next meeting for you is actually this Friday, 12/20, 12/14. That's noon City Hall. That's for canvassing the votes from the special election, which we all know is occurring tomorrow. Polls are open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. City Hall is a polling place as well as the north fire station. So if folks have not done so already, please come and vote tomorrow regarding the opt-out for the aquatics facility. Also, just a note that we held our annual Christmas party on Friday. And at the Christmas party, Tim Garvey was recognized as the City of Yankton Employee of the Year. So if you see Tim out and about, congratulate him. Certainly well-deserving of that honor. COPS Kids &amp; Christmas is going to be held in the next couple of weeks. The money fundraised from the No Shave November in the Police Department will be going to COPS Kids &amp; Christmas. If folks have families that they would like to suggest to participate in that program, they can do so by contacting Jeremy Olson in the Yankton Police Department. Also, if folks are interested in donating to the COPS Kids &amp; Christmas program, that's not something that the city allocates budgetary money to. So if folks are interested in participating financially in that, they should contact Officer Olson as well. I wanted to also bring forth to your attention, if you did not see in the Commission Information Memorandum, Kyle wants to spend more money again. Or maybe he doesn't want to, but he's going to have to. There is a sinkhole we've talked about throughout the summer months near the wastewater treatment plant. Having engineers inspect that found that it's a serious problem which needs to be addressed in the spring and are estimating about $250,000 of a repair. So in keeping with his reputation, we're giving him a bad time, but we need to make that investment. What we believe that means is the flood probably did some damage underground that we're still yet to find out about. So when we do major upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant in a few years, we're probably going to have a bigger project than we initially anticipated. So just planting that seed there right now. Commissioner Gross, would you like to add anything about MSAC? Or would you like to wait until we have a little more information?
I'll wait until we have some more information. Other than to say, we're getting close. I think at our meeting on the 20th, we will have a proposal for the commission regarding sending the letter to the Corps. I think we're getting that close. But there's... The Corps is struggling trying to interpret a law to ask. Okay? So there's no precedent. And so we're asking them to set precedent, and I think that's problematic for them. And so whatever they do, they want to do correctly. And so it's back to the attorney, back to the attorney, back to the attorney, back to the attorney. So hopefully by the 20th, I'll have more information for you.
I will also add that on the Thursday, that same Thursday, 12/20, at noon is the Second City Commission, regular City Commission meeting of the month. Following that, the Community Development Department is hosting a potluck in City Hall, so you're all welcome to join that as well. So that's all I have for the commission unless there's questions.
Are there any questions? Just personal to all of you, I will be gone on December 20th, so someone will have to take my place. All right. Onto the consent agenda. Number one, consideration of memorandum 18-257 recommending approval of the renewal of mobile home park licenses for the 2019 licensing period. Number two, setting a possible quorum event for December 15, 2018, for the Bravo Battery Activation Ceremony, which is at 11:00 a.m. at the Yankton High School. No official commission action will take place there. Establishing 12:00 p.m. on Friday, December 14, as the time and date of a notice to call a special city election meeting to canvass the election returns of the City of Yankton election to be held on Tuesday, December 11, 2018. And again, that meeting will be in City Hall. Number four, establishing December 20, 2018, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a new retail on-off sale wine license for January 1, 2019, to December 31, 2019, from Great Life Management LLC, doing business as Fox Run Golf Course. Thomas Walsh is the chairman, and that is at 600 West 27th Street in Yankton. Number five, establishing December 20, 2018, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license for July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019, from the City of Yankton, doing business as Fox Run Golf Course, to Great Life Management LLC, doing business as Fox Run Golf Course. Again, that's at 600 West 27th Street in Yankton. Number six, establishing December 20, 2018, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for one day, January 26, 2019, from Boomers Inc., doing business as Boomers Lounge, for the NFAA Archery Center at 800 Archery Lane in Yankton. Number seven, a possible quorum event on December 18, 2018, at 5:30 p.m. for the Yankton School District Forward 2024 Strategic Planning Meeting, during which no official commission action will take place. And number eight is also a possible quorum event on December 11, 2018, at 8:00 p.m. at Ben's Brewing for a Dive in Yankton event, which is their election night event. And again, no official commission action will take place. That is the consent agenda. What is your pleasure?
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the commission? Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission about our consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Number one, under Old Businesses Memorandum 18-245, supporting ordinance number 1013, the second supplement to the 2018 Annual Appropriation Ordinance number 1001, and the second reading and public hearing of said ordinance. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number two, under Old Business, is memorandum 18-246, supporting ordinance number 1014, amending the Peddler's License, Chapter 13, Article 3, Division 4, and the second reading and public hearing of said ordinance. And again, for the public, this would allow the city manager or her designee to approve an application without city commission approval. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Or anything that the city manager would like to add? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. And will someone let the business owner that prompted this change know that we've made it? Thanks. All right. Number one, under New Businesses, consideration of memorandum 18-253 regarding a contract with Great Life. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a third. Amy, do you... Or Todd, do you want to talk about this item before we vote?
Sure. I'll just talk very generally, and if Todd or Ross want to jump in. This is really something that started, oh, a couple of years ago, when we first talked about as a commission and staff about whether or not we should look at golf a little bit differently at Fox Run. Having our golf pro leave then in July prompted a little more urgency with that discussion. And not knowing what we were going to do with it being the height of golf season and not having the golf pro, we reached out to Great Life, whom which we already had an affiliated affiliation agreement with. And they came in and, for lack of better words, saved our bacon and helped us get through the rest of the golf season and did so very well. We had a challenging year with golf because of weather. However, their staff came in and worked very well with our staff to make it as successful as possible. And we started working on then negotiating a longer-term lease agreement with Great Life back in July, and we went through a number of reiterations. Commissioners Moser, Benson, and Hoffman were involved in that process. And we also had the Golf Advisory Board involved as well and went through a number of different drafts with them. And I think we negotiated an agreement that is going to be great for Fox Run golfers, be great for the community, but also for the city as well. And I'm proud of what we put together. I think that there's also room for more partnerships and more opportunities with Great Life when it comes to recreation in the future. But this is a great step in the right direction with Fox Run. So I won't go into any specifics. We walked through all those at our work session a couple of weeks ago. I have not gotten any comments from the public after following that meeting or any questions. So unless there's comments or questions from you all, or you'd like to hear from staff or from Great Life, I'll leave you to your decision.
One of the things, I guess, I would like to clarify is we were promised rates. Do we have the information on the rates?
Yes, they don't have any printed material. They're working on that currently. Will be released probably at the beginning of next week from what Don has indicated me. Just to give you a few comparisons, in 2018, an individual golf, adult golf pass out at the golf course was $594. In 2019, there will be an introductory special through January 31, and people can lock this rate in for four years if they are avid golfers. But anyway, so in 2018, they paid $594. In 2019, they'll pay 500... Sorry, did I say 5,000? $594 in '18. In 2019, they'll pay $599.88. So basically, a raise of $6. For a couple, an adult couple out at the golf course in 2018, it was $774. The rate in 2019 will be $719.88. So substantial savings there by joining Great Life. Family, again, it's a little more complicated to compare. In our scenario out at Fox Run, a family would be any two adults plus children that are between the ages of 15 and college age. If they're 14 and under, they golf for free. So in our scenario, last year in 2018, a family plus one child that's 15 to 26, or whatever the age may be, would be $834. You take the 774, which is the couple rate, and add $70. So anyway, the new rate going forward with Great Life will be $839.88. So that's about a $5 difference. That covers the entire family. Again, if you were back in 2018 and you had a couple of children that were in the 15 to 26-year age range, then that 834 would jump up to 904 and so on, $70 for each child. So again, there could be a savings there depending on how big the family is. On the cart side, if people are cart members out at Fox Run in 2018, it was $410. Now in 2019, it'll be 480, so an increase of $70. And then on the couple side, cart pass was 530. Going forward, out at Fox Run, it'll be 600. So again, about an increase of 70. But if you would compare Fox Run's rates around the state, which we do when we make rate suggestions, on the cart side, we have always been low, historically low. We've tried to catch up, but we never quite got there. So we are historically low. But anyway, on the fitness side, again, everybody's really concerned about golf. On the fitness side, their rates will be for a single $29.99. Couple will be $39.99, and a family will be $49.99. Fitness only, they are going to throw in, you can golf at Fox Run on Mondays and Tuesdays. So that'll be a added value that is not currently there for Summit Activity Center members. Again, don't have all the spreadsheet and all the documents, but they will be coming next week right away.
How long did you say they could lock in that introductory rate?
Four years, for the entire four years of the... Again, if everybody, just if the public doesn't know, this first lease that we're proposing is a four-year lease. The reason it's a four-year lease is this was our first year of having the five-year leased carts out there for our own Fox Run fleet. So we still have four years to go on that lease. So this coincides with that. When that four years is done, those carts go away, and then it'll be up to Great Life, if we've negotiated a new lease, whether they will lease carts in the future or buy their own fleet or whatever they'll do, but that'll completely become their operation and their expense.
Are there any more commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission? Well, thank you, everyone, who worked really hard on this. Roll call.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross. Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Benson.
Sardau.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Tom. All right. Number two, under New Businesses, consideration of memorandum 18-255 regarding a bid award for chemicals for the water and wastewater departments. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number three, under New Businesses, is consideration of memorandum 18-256 and Resolution 18-84 regarding a bid award for a vehicle for the wastewater department. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number four, under New Businesses, is consideration of memorandum 18-254 recommending that the city write off uncollectible utility accounts, and that will be in the amount of $1,417.05, which happens to be $3,946, or $946.59 less than last year. What is your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number five, under New Businesses, consideration of memorandum 18-258 regarding an airport grant pre-application for the Chan Gurney Airport. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dave, would you like to talk about this pre-application?
Real briefly, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. This pre-application is a part of, or the next step, in our apron expansion and hangar relocation project that we have. It also includes the removal of the tile hangar, which is, as you know, damaged. We are through all of the environmental hurdles associated with the project, and this is the first step towards actually having construction occur in 2019. We do have money for our share in the 2019 CIP. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Dave. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number six, consideration of memorandum 18-264 regarding Chan Gurney Airport Barrel Hangar Roof Closeout. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Memorandum.
We have a motion and a second. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, this is in the amount of $10,304.15 for a total project cost of $79,501.67.
That's correct.
Can you talk a little bit about what this project was?
Yeah, so the project was essentially the reshingle of the entire barrel hangar. We've had some problems with the shingles that were on it previously through the years. They weren't very wind tolerant. So now we have a new roof on there with extremely high-quality shingles that are supposed to be rated for over 100 miles an hour. We ran into some surprises with some of the gypsum sheeting that was under an area that we couldn't really see when we did the specs on the project, so that's why we had a slight overrun on the project of $3,500. That building should be good to go for a long time. Staff will be replacing the windows on the north side next spring. We have the windows in storage, have had them for a few years, and just waiting for the roofing to get done before we put new windows in.
Is there any more commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number seven, under New Businesses, consideration of memorandum 18-259 regarding Resolution 18-85, which is a replat of airport acres in the City of Yankton. The address is 301 West 31st Street. Stuart H. Huber is the owner. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser. Aye.
Major Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number eight, under New Businesses, consideration of memorandum 18-262 regarding Resolution 18-86, which is a plat of 300 blocks of Tulip Lane and Lilac Lane. Matthew Christiansen is the managing member of White Crane Estates LLC owner. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Sardau.
Aye.
Bertie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Ivan.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Number nine, under New Businesses, consideration of memorandum 18-263 regarding a bid award for the annual supply of transport tank wagon petroleum projects for Chan Gurney Airport for 2019. What is your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Is there any commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Birdie.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.